Okay, we'll call this meeting order. It's October the 8th, 7 o'clock. Brimfield Township Zoning Commission Meeting. It's called Order. May I have a roll call from Gail, please?
We could do, so Ron Jones.
Okay.
Tom Johnson.
Here.
Debbie Darless.
Here.
Tom Sargent is absent. Patrick Blair.
Here.
Seth Halen.
Here.
And Collette.
Here.
And then also present is myself, Michael Ladd, zoning director and economic development. Todd Peets with regional planning, as well as Gail Gifford. And then I would ask you to revise the agenda to accept the minutes from last meeting. And I think Debbie Darless has one comment ahead, so that...
Yeah, I was gonna do that as soon as, as soon as we accept the agenda for this meeting. So can I get, can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, has everybody gone over the minutes for September?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections?
Just Mike Ladd with Collette adding her name.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the minutes for September?
I'll make the motion. The revised 20th, I'll make the motion.
I'll, I'll second.
All right, all in favor signify, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion is carried. Okay, I believe right now then we are going to go to Mike.
Yes, so we have Todd Peets here who is going to update us on the comprehensive land use plan. Todd, you're on.
Thanks, Mike. So, all right, so you should have received the most current version of the land use plan. We're not gonna talk too much about that tonight. In fact, we're probably not gonna talk about it at all. What we are gonna talk about is a couple of different things. We did, me and Gail went out to the community sausage giveaway, whatever you call that thing, last week on Thursday, and we passed out 150 cards about, about the survey. So out of the 150 cards we passed out on the survey, we received back 52 surveys so far. A couple more things, we wanna get an article in the newspaper. I believe the township is sending out a postcard to everybody like we discussed. And also, we were gonna talk to the school about having like the seniors take the survey, because it'd probably be nice to get their input on what their community is like, especially when they're, you know, gonna graduate this coming spring. So I do have, if you wanna see it, you can say yes or no. I do have the, these, the 52 results that we have so far. If you wanna see that, I can just run right through that really fast and see how that's going, or we could skip it. The other, the real main event for tonight is to do a SWOT with you guys, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We did one of these in 2016, but it was a community SWOT, and I have those results. I don't know if Mike forwarded those to you guys or not. Did you, did you do that, Mike, or no?
No, I didn't, I didn't forward.
Well, that's good, cuz I didn't want them to be tainted, but at the same time, we could probably show it to them when we're done, so they can get an idea of where we were then and where we are today. The one thing I, the one thing I like to say about, you know, SWOTs is that they're basically a snapshot at that moment of time, what, what people are feeling. Like four years ago, I bet you there, there was no mention of a pandemic in there, you know what I mean? So it's just how things, how things change. So if you're, if you're okay, I can, I can put up on my screen really fast the survey. It's just a preliminary thing, just to give you an idea. It's obviously not even close to the final survey, you know, final results of the survey. But I'll, if it's, if it's okay with you guys, I'll just pop it on there.
Fine.
Yeah, I haven't been able to pull that file up at all on my, on my...
Did it come up, or something else come up?
Yeah, I've got, I've got that.
I see it.
So I did larger here.
Okay, so, all right, so here it is, here's our first question, like, you know, we wanted to make sure that people who are taking the survey were either working in Brimfield or living in Brimfield, and asked them how long they did either one of those things. And the good thing on this first question is you'll notice nobody took the survey who said they didn't live or work in Brimfield. And the majority, you know, I'd say, what is that? At least 60% of the people who took the survey have lived in Brimfield at least 10 years or more. Describe your property size. The majority of the people who took the survey lived on less than an acre. So we have that. The age of the people taking the test, I keep saying test, survey. You know, almost the 30% were over 60, and about a third were between 40 and 50. So you get, you get a good idea of an older, an older surveyor group, if you will, because we only had like one or two 18 to 24-year-olds and no 25 to 29-year-olds. And then this one was like, you know, Brimfield should what, and remain the same, be more rural, be more suburban, be more urban. And see, this is kinda how they, how those came out. And it was over, over a third of those responses wanted to be more rural. And 15% wanted to remain the same. You had 23% be suburban, you had 21% be more of a mix. So it was a mixed bag, if you will, of responses there. You had the community character of Brimfield should be changed to be more urban. And when you look at the strongly agrees, which is 13% to nine, only one, you know, one in five agreed that it should be more urbanized. Strongly disagree at 21%, 29%. So you had 49, 50% of the people either disagreed or strongly disagreed with it becoming more urbanized. Again, these are all preliminary. We're probably gonna get several hundred, hopefully we get several hundred, maybe even a thousand results. So this is just kinda like, just showing how it's turning out with a small group that's taken it so far. The local recreation area facilities that meet my needs. And this was kinda interesting cuz it was, it was 23. And so you base, a third said the, the recreation met their needs, and then you had 25 and 15. You had 40%, more than 40% said it didn't meet their needs, which I thought was interesting. Should we coordinate with efforts with, with other townships in the county? And this was overwhelming, 40, it was 80% agreed and strongly agreed that we should be working with other townships in the county doing coordinated planning efforts. You know, protecting the historical archaeological resources, that was overwhelming. That was in the, in the upper 80s as well. Do we need more retail and general merchandising? And you had 42 and 21, you had over 60% saying they disagreed with having more of those things. I still want an Ikea though, or a Costco, but we'll, we'll talk about that later. You know, needing more professional services, this one, you know, there's 28%. So about 45% said they would like to have more professional services. You know, we were talking about accountants and banks and doctors and engineers and things like that. Then this one was personal services. And it was kinda little, you know, that's hair salons and dry cleaners and tailors and stuff like that. You had 38 and 5, so you had 42% here, but then you had 21 and 7. So you had a third, 40% saying yes, a third saying, I don't know, and then a 26 in the middle. Then this one was an interesting too, check all the boxes that you, that you'd be willing to pay higher taxes for, you know? And so the one, you know, if there, if there's such a thing as a winner in this, that would be police and fire. You know, 65% said they'd be willing to pay more for police. 61% of those 52 people said they would be willing to pay more for fire. But these other ones, medical was 53%, parks was 53%, schools was 53%, road and bridges was 3%. So you had a good mix. This one, this one, the sanitary sewers was a 40%, and a library was 42%. So this is, this is an interesting, you know, just to, just to gauge how people feel about what they're willing to pay for, I guess. What kind of developments should we be encouraging, single family? You know, as far as residential housing types, you know, 71% was single family. So, and we had, we did have 23% for senior housing, and then 23% for clustered residential. So I'm not sure how these percentages work out. You know, I have 71% over here, and I've got 23 and 23 over here. That might be, that might be an issue. I might have to go back and tweak that maybe. Then this one over here, I'm just checking now, 15, 30, 21, yeah, that's probably 100%. So this one is, you know, should we have light industrial, which is limited outdoor storage located in Brimfield? And so you had 15 and 30, 45% said yes, and you had 23 and, and nine saying no. So you got a third saying no, 40% saying yes, and 23, 21% in the middle. Should we have heavy industrial in Brimfield? Now, I should have said outdoor storage, I'm not sure why I didn't. But you have 15 and 38, so you're over 50% disagreeing with having more, you know, heavy industrial located in Brimfield. And that may be a factor of people not understanding what heavy industrial really means. It's not heavy industrial like, you know, our grandparents or great-grandparents, industrial, heavy industrial. What are the three things you like best about living in Brimfield? And we gave them a few choices. So obviously, they like the rural atmosphere and, and being centrally located. Approximately the shopping was a big one, friendly, you know, friendly citizens. And we also have, let's see here, other things you like better. I think I have, I have eight responses, and then we can see how they responded here. Lower taxes, houses are spaced out, you know, things like that. So they're able to, they were able to give us more information on, on this topic. And we have, we have, and as we go further down, we had more places where we could ask, you know, ask them questions. You know, the intersection of Townage Road and 43 should be developed to resemble a village. And so we had 25 and 30, so we had over 60% agreeing. But it was really interesting compared to all the other responses. We had a very small number of 3%, you know, and 8%, less than 10% disagree, or yeah, just 10%, 1 in 10, did not think this was a good idea to resemble a village at Townage, or at Townage and 43. So that was interesting. Limited home rule, I, I thought we were, we wanted to get rid of this one because not many people understand what home rule was. But the, you had 11% here, you had 19%, you had 30% here. I think you had this neither disagree or, that's 50% of the people, cuz they may not even know what it was. And those who disagreed was 5 and 13, so less than 20%. Public transportation in Brimfield, we had 28 and 20, so you had 48% saying yeah. You had seven, almost eight and nine, so you had less than 20% disagreeing. And then what's your three favorite things, three to five favorite things about Brimfield Township? And all 52 respondents wrote, wrote something, you know? And, and I was looking at some, not saying everybody gave, you know, some people said they didn't know and things like that. But for the most part, people gave really good feedback. So I wanna make sure, as we get further down the road here, that you guys get a copy of the things they're saying, so you're aware of what people, what people really like about Brimfield. You know, it's important for you guys to know. And then, the next question, what are the things you think we could be, be doing better or differently? And so, you know, a lot of things were, stop expand, stop expanding, fix up the center, fix up the center of the town, but do not add a roundabout or village. Stop spending money and trying to make us into a villager city. Parks and recreation areas, and more diverse shopping. We have to drive 20 minutes to, to get to anything because it's not here. I don't know where they're going to shopping, cuz you guys got shopping in Brimfield. And it just depends on what they need, I suppose. Somebody wants a Target behind the McDonald's, that's where I want the Ikea or the Costco. If I had my, if I had my ways. Some, I don't love the fact that we are becoming the land of fast food and gas stations. More kids spaces, libraries, splash pad, pool, parks, volleyball is a comment down here. So you can see there's, it's same with the other thing. You know, I'd like to, you know, make sure you see what people are saying about what we could be doing differently or better. More restaurant options.
Texas Roos.
Yeah, I'd love to have a Texas Roos house. So, but if you see a comment in here about a Costco or Ikea, it means I took the survey. But that's not, I didn't take the survey, I'm just joking. Okay, so what else we got in here? Are you interested in future updates with the land use plan? And a lot of people, I mean, 51 people did a response on that one. A lot of them said, no, thank you, you know, thanks for this opportunity, and that's all they'd say, or no, thank you here. But I, I bet you at, at least a third, if not half, the people gave me an email that they wanted to be kept in the loop. So I thought that was encouraging, you know, people, people care and they wanna know more about what's going on. So, anyway, do you guys have any questions about this, this preliminary review of the findings, or the results, I should say?
We'll go back to the one, Todd, that we talked about taking it out, leaving it out. I don't know which one it is now.
Yeah, I thought it was either the, I thought it was the home rule one, maybe.
Yes, it was.
Because I thought, I thought we said before that we didn't think they'd understand what that meant, and they didn't.
Yeah, right, and I just, I don't think it's possible. Well, unless the state changes, you know, the legislature changes some rules, laws, we're never gonna achieve it anyway.
Yeah, the trustees wanted that one left in.
Did you say, what'd you say, Mike?
The trustees wouldn't go along with that, I don't believe.
The trustees wanted to leave that one in, so we left that in.
They wanted it in, okay.
Okay. Okay, good. Okay, well, that's the survey. Is there any other questions before we move on to the SWOT?
No.
All right, so the SWOT's gonna be interesting, cuz usually I do this face-to-face with you guys, and I sit there and I try to encourage you guys, and I try to make eye contact with people and say, hey, you know? And the other part of that is, is, you know, you guys may all wanna shout out questions or answers at the same time, and then, you know, then we gotta figure out who said what, you know what I mean? So I apologize if there's any stuff with that here. Okay, I don't know why I'm here. Stop sharing, stop sharing. All right, so now I'm gonna share the screen again, but this time...
Todd, this is Pat, I got a question.
Yeah, Pat.
Has the trustees voted or approved the questionnaire at this point?
Mike, I think we gave, we gave the, we gave the survey to the commissioners and asked them to please review it and give us feedback. We also asked the township departments to do the same thing.
Yeah, so everybody, all the department heads commented, and then there was an email to all the trustees to, for their input. And we got that back, I believe, on September 3rd, Todd, was our cutoff date. And then we submitted everything from that point.
Okay, so, so they've essentially approved the questionnaire? It's current one?
Yes, that's perfect, yep.
All right, thank you.
I am trying to, all right, so I can see my, my SWOT sheet that I wanna do, but when I look to go share the screen, it's not on my screen. Why is that not there?
So, let me check. You are allowed to share on your screen.
Yeah.
On your little share screen button at the bottom, it's green.
Yeah, no, it's fine. My document that I wanted to, to see, I don't see it on my screen. I don't know why it's not showing up. It's not in your end, it's on my end somehow. All right, well, I'm gonna see what happens when I, when I share this screen. Okay, that's not what, do you guys see the Brimfield, Brimfield Township Zoning Commission SWOT?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I'm just, I was just kinda like, you know, when I was looking at the shared screen, you get to pick which file you want to share with them, that one wasn't showing up. Okay, so in this one, we start out with the, with the strengths. And what I'll do is, is you guys tell me what the strengths of, of, you know, being in Brimfield Township, or the strengths of Brimfield Township itself. I will just, I will just add them, the strengths, and keep going until you guys run out of comments. So, you know, the one, the one strength that everybody always talks about, and I'll just throw one out just to get, get us going here, is the, the location of Brimfield. You know, we have a good location with 76 and all that, location of Brimfield. And that's, that's partially, that's largely to do with the location of I-76.
I say great fire and police department.
The zoning department.
The zoning department?
Absolutely.
What about the commission?
Yep, them too.
How about no local income tax?
Great schools, or great, yeah, great schools.
I keep going. I remember from the survey that people were saying the rural atmosphere.
I don't know, I don't know about the local income tax, cuz we're in the Jeds.
Yeah.
Well, is that just for people who work here, or that are in a JED?
Yeah, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. You're correct.
So like, people in my neighborhood don't pay any income tax unless they work in one of those areas.
Right.
You're, you're absolutely right, yep.
So I was just speaking for my neighborhood.
I think the transportation network is not only 76, but the road network in itself is conducive to a good environment.
A good, a good mix of shopping.
Good one, I was gonna say that too, something similar, Ron.
Except that we don't have Ikea.
Oh, that's, that's a weakness, I'm gonna put that down as a weakness. It's also an opportunity.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, we're gonna have a car wash, so another one.
Yeah.
What else would you like to say that's a strength for Brimfield?
I think the relationship between the local government and the residents is very good. I don't think you get that in the large metropolitan areas. I mean, how many fire departments give away sausages?
Yeah.
I know, really.
We have a, we have a really good historical society, Penn Museum.
And I, I would, I would venture to say the food cupboard.
Yes.
Good one.
Largest in the county by volume.
What was that?
The largest in the county by volume.
Is that the food cupboard, or is that something else?
The food cupboard, yeah. Not many skinny people in Brimfield.
Good organizations, you know, like, like Lions and...
Lions, is Rotary here?
No, we, we closed down years ago, the Rotary.
What about the Chamber?
Yeah, that's still here.
You'd also wanna add the boosters club for the schools.
Yeah.
Garden club. They're pretty active.
I would say it's a family-friendly community.
I know, the cemetery, cemetery's pretty nice. Well, we do have a nice cemetery. I mean, I've seen some really nasty ones, but...
Nice cemetery, yeah. It's a quiet one, quiet cemetery. I think a great selection in homes, choosing, you know, if you come out here for housing. I think we have a variety of locations, if, I don't know how to really word that, Todd.
I think you were, the first one, great selection of home, of homes, and I could have slash, variety.
I just wanna, I just wanna know, Todd, why you put great fire and police, great schools, and then they just zoning department?
That better.
Thank you.
I hope that's, I hope that's accurate, Mike.
Yes, thank you.
Some people don't think that, but you know.
Yeah, I know.
We do.
Good. Anything else?
Probably think of something after a while, but...
We can come back, actually, I have the, I have the, I have the SWOT that was done back in the summer of 2016, or the fall of 2016. And we can compare this one to that one when we're done.
Okay.
Okay, so what are some of the, so what are some of the weaknesses we have, besides no Ikea or Costco?
Traffic.
Not an organized town center.
Good one, good one.
Lack of small professional shop.
Ikea, no.
You can say it, I just can't.
Yeah.
I would say water on State Route 43.
And sewers on State Route 43.
Yes.
The water sewer, yeah.
Could use a few more red lights, too.
Yeah.
Need more red lights?
Yeah.
How about this, more traffic lights? What else we got?
How about income, that's always a weakness.
When you say income, what do you, what do you mean?
Uh, tax-based income.
Tax revenue?
Yes, yeah, we were saying, we need more tax, lack of tax revenue, a stronger tax revenue?
Well, with stronger tax revenue, you provide more services and...
All right, how about lack, lacking a strong tax base?
Well, you could, you could define that a little bit more. Right now, we're basically relying on retail types of businesses to support our tax base, where if we had light industrial or manufact, you know, light manufacturing jobs that would provide a stronger tax base.
Yeah, we're not very diverse in our tax base, I guess, would be it.
Yeah.
I agree, we definitely need more industrial.
Okay. What else?
More, more police and fire. More police, fire, and road.
Okay.
We don't have any bike-friendly roads. Could use some bike berms.
That's a good one, cuz I'm actually working with AMETs, trying to get funding for some bike paths.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Working with Cassie on that. I don't know if she reached out to you, Todd?
Yep, yes.
There's some money with AMETs, so I've been trying to push her along with AMETs.
We, we're not tied in anywhere with the, with the countywide bike, walking bike trails, are we?
Okay, not tied in with that county.
I know we had talked about it one time up on...
Yeah.
Hudson Road and tying all the way back and tying in, but I don't know where we could do it.
Okay.
Well, I think the county parks own property on Howell Road.
There you go.
And they are, they are planning to develop that. I don't know if it's funding or what the issues are, but there is land there that used to be owned by the lumber company there. Carter Lumber used to own it, and yeah, it's over now in the possession of the parks by the railroad tracks on Howell Road as you come down.
Right. That's right outside my development. I'd really like to see that turned into like a hiking path or a bike trail or something.
Right. There was some discussion that it was going to be a, a bike, what's it, mountain, mountain biking type of setup, but it hasn't materialized as of yet. But somehow or another, if we could connect that property, if the county would be willing to connect that to maybe the bike trail system in Kent, would be...
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Would be something that we could try to encourage.
I'm, I'm thinking this is an opportunity, though. I'm gonna pop that down in the opportunities section.
Okay.
Next, Park District.
Back on the weaknesses, I like to put sidewalks in there. There's, the older developments don't have sidewalks, but more importantly, you're like Route 18 is only, there's very little sidewalks on 18. During the winter time, a lot of people are walking.
We get an organized town center, we would have, you know, lighting and sidewalks.
Yeah, maybe, maybe safe walk to schools, stuff like that.
Right. I've, I've noticed that on State Route 43, from where the motels and hotels are located, that a lot of, a lot of folks are walking across the bridge on 76.
I have noticed that too, Tom.
Yeah, and there's a lack of, again, supporting sidewalks or infrastructure there coming across that property that are adjacent to 76 there.
Well, even between beach press and town center, there's a lot of people to walk at. You know, there's a lot of people live on beach press and walk back and forth.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know how many desks that we had, but, you know, can it be attributed to not having the sidewalk there? Or between town center and 76 Walmart area, there's a lot of people walk that as well. So I think that should be incorporated into some type of growth plan that it's gonna be hard to get the state to honey up the money for 43 or 18.
Yeah. Or the county down 18 or Thomas Road.
Right. That should be a priority.
Okay, what's, what's next?
If you're, if we're running out of weaknesses, we can come back to weaknesses too. So next would be opportunities. So we put a couple of bike trail things on there. Safe walk to schools is an opportunity.
Job opportunities with all the new stores coming in.
Did you bring that up, Todd, the next one?
What's that?
Opportunities. No, I'm just, I don't, I don't see it. Roll up. You're getting...
Do you see it at all?
Yep, see it now.
I, I don't. I'm halfway through weaknesses.
Okay, so it goes from bottom of weaknesses, and it jumps over to, it created another page on my screen.
Oh, wait, maybe that's it. Okay, I got it.
Do you see it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and so, okay, so with jobs, jobs at all the new stores is, is an opportunity. What else?
I think zoning in itself is an opportunity. We have a lot of land that's capable for light industry and/or retail, those types of, of tax base increases is, is just not focused correctly. I don't know why.
Sure.
Tax incentives would help? I don't know.
Yeah, we're just gonna utilize TIPS and CRAs.
Yeah, right. So there, there's a lot of land here that can be developed rather quickly.
Does the township have an economic development director that, you know, goes out and kind of markets Brimfield and tries to entice companies?
Collette, that's me.
Mike.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I thought you were zoning. Oh.
I'm economic development director and zoning.
Oh, sorry, okay. Sorry.
That's how you got, that's how you got Maple Crest.
Collette, you're not trying to impress the boss, are you?
I added economic, excellent economic development director.
Hey, we worked really hard on Maple Crest.
How come that's not one of our strengths?
What's that? Maple Crest?
No, economic development director.
It's at the bottom. I just put it on there.
Yeah, that's definitely a, a strength.
It is a strength. It absolutely is. It's better than not having one, for sure. So did you want me to put Maple Crest in on an opportunity or, or no?
Yeah, I think that's already...
Well, I, I always think about the Maple Crest behind, behind the Menards and the other place. That's all it is. It's an industrial.
Yeah, that's still light industrial back there.
Yeah, we, we have, we have some, some bites on that one. I'm excited about that, so I would put, definitely put that down.
Okay.
What about the opportunity for improving the town square and maybe getting an engineer or somebody to draw up an initial plan and give us an estimate on costs and, you know, starting to get going on that?
We, we started that just before you came, Collette. We did, we had a study done. We did it right on 43 and 18, and we were showing that we want to do walkways and lighting, and it was potential for traffic signals on 43 and 18, like a different scenario or a roundabout. That's why, one of the comments on there, when the feedback was, we don't want a roundabout.
Oh, right, right.
People that don't want it, but we were trying to work with the engineer with the county because they were not too excited about it. Since we have to rely on their engineering, they're the only ones that could actually go after AMITs funding for our roads, and right now, they're not bored, but we're working on it.
I think, well, okay, that's improving the town square center, yeah. I do see one of the buildings is, is being fixed up a little bit and is now...
Oh, the former Krieger's?
Yeah, that's a dog, dog and cat.
Yeah, rumors.
Rico's is scheduled, Rico's has got a demolition permit out right now, and they might, they might be selling and knocking that down, and then I know the fire department offered to build it today, so we'll see what happens.
What's going on with Sully?
So far, it's proposed, proposed to be a sit-down restaurant. Joe's Barbecue is supposed to knock that building down, the new building, but he sort of slowed down with this COVID, so we'll see, see how.
He just wants, he wants to take the little building down or the whole thing down, or remodel the bar.
He wants to take the little building.
Yeah.
No, he's gonna take the little building and the big building down, build one nice restaurant for the barbecue place.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, it would be. I, we're hoping that he can make a go of it.
Yeah.
He seems pretty popular.
Saturdays and Sundays, he's got a line there.
Yes, he certainly does.
What other opportunities do we have in the, in the township?
I think when we talked about, we're doing this comprehensive land use, we talked about rezoning some of our areas to light industrial instead of, I think we have a lot of integrated commercial and a lot of RO in various districts that were transitioning districts that we could look into industrial.
Yeah, yeah, the, the RO, the RO was just thrown in there as a transitional. We have removed some of those and changed them over to, to other things.
Yes, that's correct.
GC down the Thomas Road and Sunnybrook area, we, we changed some of that going south, so something might happen there eventually.
I would like, I, I still think one of our biggest opportunities is right behind McDonald's. I think we can land something good there if we maybe relook at the zoning to spark some development.
I agree. So, so the gas station, the Sheets thing is, is no longer?
No, they're, they're actually going to apply. They have not applied yet, but they still, their attorney said they're gonna go ahead and try to get in, so.
Good luck.
Yeah.
What else do we have for opportunities?
The remodeling or revamping the, the plaza.
You guys still haven't talked about Ikea or Costco?
See, the whole area just doesn't, I don't know whether it's because of everything else at the other end of town is built up and nobody is interested in doing anything there, but you know, he has a big medical building there with nothing in it, and I find that's a shame.
Yeah.
That's sad because it is a nice building.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of activity. He had three offers on the 20 acres back there along the freeway, but they just never can work out the numbers with them.
I know Mike wants a small fortune for it. I know he had one time planned a something back there all the way along the expressway from 43 there and going straight back in. Good stuff. Nothing's come of it.
Okay, what else do we have? Anything else, or do we should move on to threats?
Does Brimfield have a senior center or a rec center or anything like that? Sorry, I've only been here here. Do we have a nice place for the seniors?
We do not.
Oh, man, we need a senior center.
Unless, unless you call Lyons Park.
They've been meeting, they've been meeting and using the Brimfield Community Center. The seniors been meeting up there now, but they don't have a designated senior center.
And there's no like recreation center or anything like that?
The Thomas Rec Center does give us a discount. Well, we do have that senior sneakers, whatever, too, that we use.
Where, where is that at?
The Thomas Rec Center there on, on 18 going into Thomas, just past Maple Crest on the right-hand side.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's good if you have seniors, you know, you have silver sneakers.
Yeah, they have that silver sneakers that, that's free.
Okay.
But it would be nice to have a
One in Brimfield.
Senior center.
Oh, yeah. Twinsburg has a really nice one, I know, so I, I just think, yeah, it's a real nice, it's a real asset.
I wish we had a post office. We used to.
There's one up in plant there, yeah.
I know, and there's one in Magador, but we used to have one in Brimfield.
Couple different places.
Brimfield's got five zip codes.
Yeah, how come we, we need, Mike worked to try to work on that, right? For us to have a zip code, Mike Kozinski?
He did, he did.
Yeah, oh my gosh, they gave him, no, no way, they said.
And that goes way back before Mikey, when, you know, Bobby Vee and, and Moore, Steve Moore, they tried it and didn't work.
Nope.
Seems like we've got, I think we've got sufficient number of churches. I'm not so sure. How do you guys feel about that? You guys have to drive?
Our churches, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that some of them have a hard time filling right now, so.
Yeah, Bridge Bible, we're actually meeting at, in Kent at the church that's going to be torn down because we can't meet at the school.
Right.
What about sit-down restaurants?
I thought, I thought they were talking about building a, a building eventually. Is that right?
We are. It's on, going to be on 43 and Howell Road, right there at that corner.
Correct.
Yeah.
Where the car lot was, or is, or was?
No, north, that, would that be considered northeast?
Northeast?
Yeah, you know, in that corner where they were gonna put the...
Towing service in?
Yeah, whatever. The Octagon, Octagon building that's there, the house that's there in the corner up at the hill.
Right.
Yeah, so we, our church purchased that property there at 43 and Howell.
Great.
Yeah.
That takes, that takes care of the towing service that was gonna be there.
Mike Led, I think you even made a comment to Tom Lees, saying that was a great space for us. That would be great.
Yep. I did, yep. I didn't know if it was confidential. That's why I sort of asked.
Oh, yeah. No, it's not. No, not confidential.
Do we, do we have any other opportunities?
Can't think of any.
All right, we'll move on to threats. What kind of threats do we have?
COVID-19. Running out of bland, no.
I don't know, possibly overbuilding. I don't know at what point we're going to overextend the...
Overbuilding, good one. Thanks, Todd.
Yeah, you know, with the residential developments and everything, I, I don't know how many more we could safely handle.
That's, that's a good point. I, no, I think that's a valid point because your services have to keep up, and that's why I put a weakness could be, you know, the police, fire, and service, because, and we have that down, just for the personnel, I think there comes a point where the PRDs, which are less than, you know, a lot of them are quarter acre lots, I think once this comprehensive land use plan is done and, and it goes through the exercises, I think it's one of the things that we should look at as, as the text into the zoning codes to concentrate on maybe certain districts like the R4 or R3 for PRDs only, and then the rest of them don't even given it an option because it's just gonna overbuild us.
Yeah, I, you know, there has to come a point when we're not gonna be able to handle all of it. There's been a point where the, the sewers and water and sewers are not gonna handle, because, you know, for being all that from what, Ravanna and Kent and Stowe, I think.
So the threat two could be overworking our police and fire department.
Overworking economic development? Overworking economic development director? I know he's busy. You told me he's pretty busy right now.
Yeah, it's, it's, we have a, we have a record year. I think I, I know I brought that to you guys' attention and Tom wanted me to show him the permits. I will, I will do that. I just haven't had an opportunity with JND gone, but right now we're, we're the highest year ever in permits, so.
And with no help. Do you have help now, Mike, or no?
I'm using Kayla. I don't know if you met her. She used to be my secretary in Macedonia.
Okay.
And she's under contract with us to, to help us through this, but she's only given, you know, she can, she's got three kids at home mom, so she's, she's giving us what she can, you know.
Is Gail your, is Gail your secretary now?
No, Gail's one of mine. She's actually the one who's working, she's doing a lot of heavy lifting on the plant, so she's.
I met her the other day then, huh?
Yep, you did. She was the one helping pass all the stuff.
Okay.
And so she's, she's, she's doing most of the heavy lifting on the plant, so, yeah. So she's sitting on this so she can hear firsthand what kind of comments we have.
She's done a good job on, on this anyway.
Absolutely.
But Mike, you mentioned in the trustee meeting that you did get a lot of applications, correct?
I had well over a hundred, close to two. Yeah, yeah, we, we narrowed it down and, and the overall say has to come from Craig. We did do interviews and, and we had some candidates we really liked, so. But the final decision comes from the fire chief, who's also the chief administrator.
Okay, so what other threats do we have? Besides lack of stacking, staffing in the zoning department?
I think the community buy-in to our plan.
Todd, I would say one of our strengths is, is regional planning too. I would add that. I mean, this is an asset that you're able to do this for us.
Okay. Be happy to add that in there.
Yeah. Sorry, I missed that earlier, but yeah, you've been an asset and a very big help to us, so appreciate it.
Sure, no problem.
Yes, we do.
So, so what I remembered, I probably shouldn't be tainting this, but I remember one of the threats was traffic. You know, the threat for business, you know, the same, we had that same problem up in Streetsboro where they get, they gotten so big that people can't even, you know, enter the, enter and exit those businesses and they've, they've gone dormant because people won't shop there anymore. You know, do you guys perceive that, do you see, perceive traffic as, as a threat?
Yes, I do. I, I would add with the traffic that, that a lot, there's a lot of complaints. So I would say in the weakness section is there's a lot of roads that need to be repaved in the, in the subdivisions. And it's, it's gonna take a lot of money to get those all.
And it's gonna be horrendous during the holiday there up there with Maple Crest now.
You know, I, I'm, I'm really surprised with the work that they did. I don't know if it's COVID-19 causing it or what, but the traffic doesn't seem to be as, as bad as it was earlier. I think, I think with the, the road work that's been done there, I think has moved the traffic along pretty nicely.
Well, we, we got two big road projects coming in next year. They're, they're going out to bid this at the end of this year and we teamed up with Talmadge on both jobs, so. AMET is funding the interchange modification down there as well as they're, they're looking, they're widening 18 through, going through to Talmadge into Summit County. So we sort of cross the lines and, and you're gonna see that next year. There's gonna be a lot of construction, but, but it's gonna help, help that area.
Well, with all the housing that they're doing, if Talmadge continues to further up.
Well, and I think that's key to our light industrial because a lot of people moving their, their product, it'd be a lot nicer to have access in and off the freeway easily without congestion.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see them do something with Magador Road between, between Porty or where the progress from Porty's street there and widen Magador Road coming down through there somehow, but you know, those folks would just go nuts that live down there, so.
They do.
I think one of the issues, if we can revisit weaknesses, I think Mike talked about some time ago about a lack of a ladder truck for the fire department. With the equipment we have in the community now, I think we're, we're restricted on the height of our buildings based on fire protection resources that we have.
Well, I, I think if they get the, if they get the new fire station in that, that's one of the things that Craig wants to see is, is a ladder truck. There's no room, nowhere to put one right now.
Right, so I guess we could add also a lack of, of a new fire station to accommodate newer, modern equipment.
Yeah. I was talking to Craig the other day and I said, you know what? I, I've been campaigning for a new fire station for over 30 years. You know, I, I was on the apartment right after that building was built and it was too small then.
Okay. What else do we have?
You know what, one of our, one of our threats is, is running out of space at the cemetery.
Why don't the trustees make some sort of an offer on part of the Green Hills, Green Hills?
They, they have. Yeah, we reached out to Wyno and right now the Pitts family still owns it.
Right.
And so we're waiting for a call from the Pitts to see if we can purchase some of the land that, you know, to extend that. But with, it's in the works.
That'd be nice. Yeah, it's definitely going to, we're gonna have to do something about that eventually.
I mean, the development that they proposed goes right up to it and I, I had conversations with, with Wyno, but he's, he's having some difficult, difficulty with the Pitts family right now, so I don't know how all of this is gonna work out. Hopefully good.
Yeah, I'd like to see that whole project go there.
Well, the, the Redwood section is ready to go. I think they're, Todd, they probably reached out to you already with the replat, so.
Yeah, they, well, actually they're just gonna do, I think they're just gonna do exemption because it's over five acres and then they're gonna plat everything else around it.
Yep.
That's at the, that's at the Green Hills or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna get started shortly. I think they want to pull permits end of November as soon as the pass is regional.
Okay, are we gonna stick with the, the 50, or 50% or whatever it was, the front part of it had to be commercial?
He's got, so far he's got an assisted living center going in back there along with Redwood and new homes surrounding it, but we're gonna hopefully get it all worked out.
Okay.
An assisted living center, I don't know. You've got that one that's coming in on 43 and Malloy still, who, who just re-upped their permits because they were behind, their engineers and architects were behind with COVID and they just renewed it.
Well, they're gonna be, is that one gonna be the Alzheimer and dementia facility or?
Yeah, that one's gonna be eventually a full-blown nursing down there, yeah.
Good.
Okay, what else do we have? It's eight o'clock now and I think we're kinda running out of ideas. If you don't, if we come with some more stuff, we can always add, add to it. So, does anybody have anything that they wanted to get out before I move on?
No.
Okay, so typically what I do is I hand out, this is the time I hand out little stickies and I give a little dots, I guess, and I give, pretty much like, everybody gets like five dots of one, or five green dots and five red dots and the green dots are things they like and the things, you know, the things, the red dots are things they'd like to avoid or not, you know, things where they worry that we should be taking care of, you know, that kind of thing. So the green dots are things we should be doing, red dots are things we should be doing before it gets, before it gets any worse, kind of thing. It's really hard for you guys to do dots online, so we might have to do the honor system. And what I can do is I can just ask you, I'll just read off each one of these and you can tell me if you wanna put a positive or a negative dot on there and we'll just keep moving from there. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Now, if I count up, I don't know how many people are even on the, on the call, but if I can end up with more dots, I know somebody should, but that's okay. All right, so strengths, again, you can put a green dot or a red dot next to any of these. So a strength, one of the strengths is location of Brimfields, especially the state road 76. Any dots? Uh, great, what's that?
Green one.
A green? Okay, so. Three greens?
Yep.
Three greens. That didn't come out very, very good, but all right, there's three, there's a three there. Yeah, okay, so great fire and police department?
Green.
Green.
How many, sorry, I heard three.
I'm good, green.
Four. All right, I got four greens there. Fantastic zoning department.
Yes.
Of course.
Of course, yeah.
Is that three greens?
Come on, speak up there.
No pressure. I think you're using, I think you're using up all your greens though.
Do we only have a limit?
Yeah, you have five. You're supposed to say, you have five total greens and you're supposed to have five total reds.
Oh, oh, you'll only speak for your very favorites.
Yeah, you'll speak for your very favorites. Do you want, do you want to start over real quick or no?
I'm taking back my zoning one.
Okay, so how many, how many zoning greens do we have? Three or four?
I think you have four.
All right, four, four's good. All right, so then, no local income tax?
Yes.
All right, we got one of those. Any negatives on these things? I mean, not that you want to pay any taxes, I'm sure you don't. Okay, but just speak up if you have a negative. All right, so great schools. Rural atmosphere. High transportation network conducive to good environment.
Green.
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 Three greens. Any more greens?
Yeah, one more green on there.
All right, so we got four greens. Good mix of shopping.
Green.
Green.
All right, we got two of those. Relationship with township, government and residents.
Green.
We got one of those. Good, really good historical society museum. Food cupboard, largest in the county. Good organizations. I have Lions Chamber, Brewster's Club, Garden Club.
I have a green.
Okay. Family friendly.
Green.
Green.
All right, we got two greens. Nice cemetery.
It's a nice cemetery bud.
I can hope for that one.
Not wasting a green on that one.
What's that?
Not wasting a green on that one.
I see. Great selection of homes and slash variety of housing. Excellent economic development director.
Green, 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 green.
Green, green.
I don't know, I don't know how many people said green. I'll give them a six. And then, and then, and PC, regional planning.
Green, 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 green.
We don't have any greens left.
All right, I'll just do a four because even though, I don't, I don't have to have any, to be honest with you. Okay, so weaknesses, again, you also do your reds too, right? So weaknesses, traffic.
Red.
So I got three reds. All right, so then not organized town center.
Red.
Red.
I heard five. Lack of small professional shops.
Red.
Yeah, red.
Red.
All right, three reds. Lack of water and sewer on 43.
Green.
Red, red, red.
Well, we have one green, I heard a green, and then we got three reds. And three reds. All right, then I had, need more traffic lights in the state road 43. We got one red.
Where, where would you put it?
Not really sure.
By the school.
I put one at Beach Crest and I put one at the school.
Yep, Beach Crest and the school.
Okay. Lack of strong tax base, rely on retail instead of manufacturing. More diversity of the tax base.
I think that's a green.
All right, so that's a one green. All right, so then I have more police and fire, more police, fire and road services. Reds or greens? Okay, so roads, not bike friendly.
Yeah, green.
A green. I agree would mean you're okay with them being not bike friendly.
Oh, then red. I thought it was agreeing with the fact that.
I think you heard the word friendly and you liked green. That's okay.
Oh, okay.
It's not friendly. So if it was, it's an opportunity though. I don't know if you have that down in our opportunities, but we.
Oh, yeah.
Not tied into county-wide bike system. Lacking.
I'm giving that, I'm giving that a red also.
Okay. Lack of sidewalks on older, in older subdivisions and main roads.
Red, I think that's a two.
Okay, two. No, no sidewalks across the I-76 bridge. That should be on state, I'm gonna put down SR 43. Any reds or greens there? Talmadge Road under 76, bad for pedestrians. Road maintenance, especially in the subdivisions. Lack of a ladder truck for fire departments restricts height. Any reds or, no reds or greens there?
Red. And also the road maintenance.
Okay. The last one for weaknesses is a lack of a new fire station to accommodate modern equipment. Red, greens?
Absolutely. Well, is green, what's, what's green mean then?
Green means you like it. I think you'd probably want a red.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's that, that's it for that. Opportunities, connect park district property to the Ken Parks and bike trails.
Green.
I got two greens. And then safe walks, safe walk to schools.
Green.
Okay, so.
Yeah, green.
All right, jobs with, with all the new stores.
I don't understand that one.
That one, it's an opportunity. There's, now there's jobs available because we have all the new stores.
Okay.
That would be green?
Yeah, you want a green?
Green.
Two greens? All right, zoning capable to help tax base.
Green.
Green.
Got three greens?
Four, they got four.
All right, I got four, I got four greens. Tax incentives, like TIPS and CRAs, is opportunities.
Lot of dots.
What's that? You got a dot? Yeah, some of you guys, some of you guys spent a lot of dots, but that's okay. Maple Crest Industrial Property, I should probably add property to that. Yeah, some of you guys, some of you guys spent a lot of dots, but that's okay. Um, Maple Crest, uh, industrial property, I should probably add property to that.
Green.
So we got one green on that one. Um, improving the town square or center.
Green.
Green.
Heard three greens. Uh, rezoning areas to light industrial.
Green.
Green.
Got two greens. Um, remodeling and revamping plaza. Not anything. A designated senior center.
Green.
Green.
Got two for those. And then I have a, a post office, and this is saying basically we have five zip codes in township, so a need for a post office. Anything? No. All right, then I've got, and then I've got these six threats. These are, these are red dots now. COVID-19. That's gonna go away sooner or later, right? Knock on wood?
Right.
Overbuilding, limit, limit residential development.
Red.
Red.
Got two reds.
Red.
Got three reds.
We got three.
Okay. And then I've got overworking fire, police and fire.
I would do a red there if, if it's truly a threat. I don't know this area. I, I mean, are they overworked?
They would be. If we get, you know, more and more comes in.
Yeah.
I think, I think-
I mean, they're overworked now.
I think that was the, when we were talking about overworking the police and fire was the fact that, you know, the, the township continues to grow, but are they, are they growing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So then there's community buy-in for the plan. Is that a threat?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Excessive traffic congestion. Is that a threat? We had road maintenance. And then last one was running out of cemetery space.
I agree with that. That's a threat.
Yeah.
That's not a threat. It just means nobody can die.
Yeah, well, in Southfield they ran out and, uh, the community was outraged. I think, yeah, it was-
So what did they do?
I, I, I'm not sure. I, I do kinda recall that they-
They put grandma in the next town over.
What happened, they are, yeah. What happened is if you're in the jet and you die and you are a Brimfield Township resident, the township is responsible for burying you. So if you don't have cemetery space, they have to go buy it somewhere.
Maybe we can, maybe they can buy some, you know, buy our backyard.
Yeah.
We do have a cemetery up on Monador Road.
Yes, we do, and they said that they wanna use that one.
What's that?
We got some farm field.
Yep.
Do you guys, did you guys, can you guys see what I got on the screen now or is it, you should be able to see what I got on the screen, right?
Yeah.
So this is from two thousand sixteen, and I think in two thousand sixteen it was a little bit all more over, all over the place than it was tonight. So we like broke it out into topics, and then I, and these were the comments that were underneath there. So product, proximity of seventy-six was a big one. The community services, excellent safety services, which we, I think we all agree that's still true. Excellent community organizations, that's got a lot of votes. Community assets, wonderful people, churches, uh, community cup board was mentioned four years ago. Um, you know, administrative leadership, and we talked about that tonight, economic development, room for commercial growth, variety of hotels, shopping diversity, existing retail, reasonable taxes, good restaurants. Planning, even, we have had a couple of positive votes on that back then. Health and wellbeing, medical facilities close by and recreation. Are we, you know, we had weaknesses here about location and access. We had infrastructure issues, no library. So Mike's got these. I think he can send these to you. We don't have to go through every one of these. But you can see your comments are very similar to what these were, but they're, they are different to what they, you know, they're a little bit different in some, in some ways. And then we had a lot more, we had a lot more threats on here than we had tonight, but, you know, we had crime and drug activity. We even talked about crime and drug activity tonight. That's probably a good thing, right?
Yep.
And we didn't talk a lot about, you know, this stuff here either on, as economic development, you know, this stuff's different. Online purchasing. You know, we, you know, four years ago that was considered, that was, and online purchasing still is taking down brick and mortar. Shouldn't fit ourselves, but, anyway, all right. Now that we had your input on this, I, I guess the next steps, do you guys have any questions about all of this or no?
No.
So the next, the next step is to take some and take this stuff. We're meeting with the township trustees and the, the staff, the staff to work on a five-year goal. It's a little different than what we did tonight. Um, we're, we're doing some goal setting and, uh, we're also gonna be doing a SWAT. So it'll be interesting to see how the, what you did tonight and how that, what they do, um, on next Friday. See how that coalesces. And then hopefully between now and our next meeting, we'll have that postcard out to the community and we'll have hopefully a, a thousand or more responses to the surveys, so we have, have that information. And once we have all that survey information and the five-year plan and the township, uh, officials wanna work forward from, we should be able to, you know, start setting our goals, you know, at least we, you know, me and Gail can start crafting our goals to present back to you guys based on the input we receive from all the residents and from the trustees and et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully, um, we can, we can, uh, debrief you in November and start giving you golden objectives and policies, strategies to look at, starting in December. Is that, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right.
Great job. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Do you need anything else for me, Mike? I'll stop sharing this thing now.
No, thank you, Todd. Appreciate it.
Gail, did you have anything to say?
No.
It's okay.
Thank you for your work, Gail.
Yeah, absolutely. She likes to get put in a spot like that sometimes.
Is, uh, is there anything, uh, else that we need or, uh, the next zoning meeting will be November?
The eleventh is Veterans Day. Oh, I'm sorry, twelfth, November the twelfth, right? That's Thursday.
Yes, November the twelfth.
Twelfth? Okay. Um, do you have anything, Mike?
No, that's it.
Ron, this is Pat.
Yes.
We, did we vote to accept the minutes as written from last public meeting?
We did.
We, it was revised with, uh, Colette's name on the one spot.
Yeah, but did we take a roll call vote? Do you need to do that?
Yeah, probably wouldn't hurt to do a roll call, yeah.
Okay.
That's simply because we're remote.
All right, I thought we did.
I thought we did.
I'll have, uh, uh, a motion, please, to accept-
I thought I made a motion and I thought-
I thought you did, and Tom made the second?
Yeah, so I seconded.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is carried.
I think for administrative purposes, uh, since Tom Sargent was not here, there needs to be an indication on the record of, of what alternate, uh, building position to manage.
All right. I, let's, let's do, uh, Colette. I don't think she's, uh, she has been, uh-
Yeah, since Colette has been.
Yeah. Yeah. She's been bad a few times. Okay. So she'll, she'll get paid for this meeting.
About pay, um, uh, Mike, is, is, uh, any of your assistants have the capability of forwarding over to the, uh,
Tom, you're gonna need to speak up a little bit. We can barely hear you.
Okay. Um, speaking of pay, uh, we have, uh, several of the, uh, we need to be reimbursed, uh-
August and September.
Yeah.
Okay.
Capability.
Yeah, I'll, I'll submit, I'll submit it to Kirsten.
Yeah, that'll be for September, so end of October, please.
Uh, yeah, it'll be August, September and October.
Right. Yep, I'll send one right away.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think those got sent over. Uh, okay. Uh, anybody else have any questions or comments? Anything for the good?
Thank you, Todd, again.
Thank you, guys.
I'll, uh, set the motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion fast.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Have a good month, folks. See you next-
All right. See you guys, see you in November.
Bye-bye.
You too. Thanks, guys. Night.